Right, we're now live on YouTube.
That's great. Before the meeting starts, Christine, over to you.
Thank you very much, Eamon, councillors. You may recognise these words, they appear on every town council agenda. Members are reminded when making decisions that the Public Sector Equality Duty 2010 requires members to have due regard to the need to eliminate unlawful discrimination, harassment and victimisation and other conduct that is perceived by the act. Advance equality of opportunity between people who share a characteristic and those who don't. And to foster good relations between people who share a characteristic and those who don't. Fine words, but are we putting them into action? But the nine protected characteristics listed in the Equality Act 2010, one is race. Then two weeks ago, we heard the following words in an events meeting. We are after all a white country.
On a point of order, this is not on the agenda.
I'm committing.
Not an item on the agenda. Well, you should, you should stay by standing orders and do what is actually the right thing.
I've decided that it can be on here because the resources committee looks after policies and it relates to policies. And would you kindly not just interrupt like that? Thank you. Christine, back to you.
Thank you, Chairman. We are after all a white country, regardless of what people may say. It's still 83% white. You can dispute it, but the fact is that we are a white country. Context was plans for a summer bounce back from Covid. A member of our diversity and inclusion working group had just expressed the hope that diverse talents in the town would be included and celebrated. Now, I don't of course dispute the 83%, nor do I judge the intention behind the words, but I do know their effect. Because the entire meeting was aired and recorded on YouTube, many people watched it and they expressed their alarm on social media. If the existence of people of colour is effectively denied, is their contribution to the life of the town unwelcome? These reverberations are still rumbling, but as far as I know, no action has been taken. So what I ask today is, what are the sanctions next time something like this happens? And who is responsible for calling it out? The chairman of the meeting, the town clerk as proper officer, or will it be left to individual councillors? What mechanisms are in place? Who can the public appeal to? Of course, any town councillor has the right to express an opinion. But the good name of the whole council is damaged by the failure to challenge such statements. So I personally apologise for not challenging those words at the time when they should have been challenged. And I completely repugiate and dissociate myself from them. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you for a point well made. I hope the council and all the members take this fully on board in the future. And we can perhaps review our policies where necessary so that we can restore and maintain the council's good name in such matters. We'll move on to the agenda. Any apologies for absence, Nina?
Yes, we've got apologies from councillor Harvey and from councillor Mahi for lateness.
Right, okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None, Chairman.
Minutes of the last.
Oh, hang on, Rick's got a declaration.
Yeah, sorry, I want to declare an interest as trustee and secretary of Friends of the Library when we discuss the subscriptions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. The minutes of the last meeting held on the first of March, they've been received at full council. Everybody happy with those?
Yeah.
So that we can agree them then, can we?
Agreed.
Happy to.
Thank you. And the minutes of the communications strategy group held on the 11th of March. I think we just note receiving those, don't we?
Yeah.
If we move on to the action report then, and my screen's gone dead. Well, there we go. I think some of the stuff is on the agenda already, isn't it? In fact, most of it is.
Yeah.
The pension review, yeah, that's on the agenda as well. We've got the.
No, the pensions review's not on the agenda, so.
That's the one that isn't. Okay, sorry. Paul, do you want to sort of go through that again?
Yeah, just note, there was a query when we spoke about pensions at a recent meeting. So I've checked back through the report. So the query was why all town councils are paying the same level of contribution, but actually that's not the case. So I've given the link to the report that shows that. And our town council, like every organisation, is assessed every three years for the correct pension contribution. So the agreement that was reached last time round for that was 25.1%, which is our contribution. And every organisation is slightly different based on the amounts people are paid, historic risk. And so that they look at actually who's involved and who has been involved and then work out what the potential risk to the fund could be from the organisation.
Okay, thank you. Before I come to you, Robin, Paul, councillor Harrow, you raised this, I think initially. Content with that response? You're muted. You're still muted.
Right, yes, I'm, I suppose so, because digging into pensions, I could spend the rest of my life doing it, you know? And I don't want to.
Okay, thanks, Robin.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I just ask that the town clerk at a later meeting of the new council brings forward a report explaining why town council pays contributions, what we have paid and what we've historically paid because new councillors joining the council may not be aware of this. And it would be just an informative note at a future resources meeting, preferably not the first one.
Happily.
Okay, thanks. Lisa?
Thanks, Mike. I thought it'd be pretty explanatory, the fact that we have staff, we pay staff and therefore we pay into the pension pot.
It's not that we pay in, it's the amount we pay in, the percentage of salaries that we pay in that was being queried.
Okay.
Any other comments? Move on then?
Yep.
Right. Onto our favourite bit, the budgets. Appendix B is in two parts. There's firstly two pages of explanation of differences between income and expenditure. Is everybody happy with them? Paul, have you got anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, no.
Fine, okay. Shall we move to the, the income and expenditure stuff then? There's 10 pages of that, as usual, proposed to go through a page at a time. Just shout out if there's anything on page one.
Martin?
Yes, Martin. Martin, you're muted.
I'm not now. It takes a little time for the computer to wake up. I was already. The alarm. Now we've had the.
Do you want to give the, sorry, the subject?
Sorry, it was, alarm is 4055. It's near the bottom of the page, £91.
Right.
Or whatever that is in that, that column. But my question is not necessarily about the amount, but obviously that's the driving force. Now that we've redone the chamber, is the alarm still associated or part of the community centre one? Or is there any interaction there?
I'm pretty sure our alarm is separate to the community centre alarm.
That's fine then, yeah.
Unlike all the other utilities, that is the one bit that's actually clearly.
I knew there was some crossovers, so I just thought, oh, as I saw the alarm, I thought that was it. Thank you very much, town clerk and chairman.
Okay, thank you. Page two. Robin, is that page two you're querying? You're muted.
No, I've got a comment on page six, Chairman, when it comes.
Okay, so page two, no. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six, Robin.
Yeah, just for continuity, Chairman, 1046, LAFF funding. Can I suggest that we keep the, the LAFF funding and just change it to community board funding for future? Because the LAFF fund is now zero spent, that we just change the title to community board number and keep the same budget number. It'd be a reasonable suggestion, I think. Because we, we do have funds coming in and it would seem to be the right place on the agenda.
Paul, is that feasible? I had a feeling that the community board funding was coming over for specific projects and that therefore it would appear under that pod project.
Sorry, you all froze there for a second. Yes, community board funding so far, we have put against something specific, but if there's a general community board income, then we would use that same code and rename it.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Anything else on page six? More? Page seven? Page eight? Page nine? Page 10? So we're all happy with that. Oh no, page 11? That's it? Everybody happy with them then?
Yeah.
Paul?
Are we going to fire some of this into this year's? Because it's been so odd really with not spending money because of Covid. But we, I don't recollect us sitting down and talking about the fire business, which we usually do at some stage towards the end of the year, don't we?
Paul?
So there's not much to be fired. What we did do, when we set the precept, we talked about a whole set of new earmark reserves or increased earmark reserves. So rather than firing it directly into the same budget, it went back into the general account, which is my understanding, the financial regs. And then, so there's quite, so we've got the bounce back budget, we're repairing bridges and several other things that we've allocated new money to in the earmark reserve. And also obviously we've now agreed to buy the cemetery land with the extra money that was in the bank as well. So by the time we finish, the reserve, general reserve will still be up a bit, but it won't be up anything like you'd think.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Robin.
Yeah, just a comment from the events committee, that if you look, Paul, the, the bottom one, Holocaust memorial, that was fired out of the events budget to cover that. And, and also the river rinse, we took a decision because we hadn't used the river rinse money, we'd fire it into earmark reserve in case there was any possibility of doing it as restrictions lift. Because we got completely, if you remember, the river was so high. So we did move some muddies around from committees and and they were added to the list. So that was things done, Paul.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. Then we'll move on to item 62, which is the land and assets list, appendix C. I think it's fairly self-explanatory, isn't it? Martin?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is assets, but why have we got fire doors on there? And it appears in two places. I thought a fire door would just be part of the building, not a particular asset. Yes, we may have bought them, but it just seems a strange thing to see on there.
Paul, can you answer that?
That is actually a very good point. And obviously the way the system now works is because the system is now connected directly to RBS. When you buy something, it comes up saying, should that now go on the asset list? But yeah, they shouldn't be there, so I will take them off.
But it comes under the chamber, under BLD 12 and under the Hillcrest Way, under BLD. Oh, sorry, INF 52.
Yes.
They seem to be different cones there.
These aren't doors purchased ready for installation when some other work's done, are they?
No, they're, they're there, they're in.
Oh, well, that is a bit dark, joining them separately then. Robin?
There may be a simple answer for this. I hope there is.
Well, that's what we can ask for, isn't it?
Yeah. The, we haven't got the signpost that we own on here as assets, because we own those on the town centre roads. They are our assets. We own those, we pay for them. There's, there's the town centre, welcome to Buckingham signs and the fair signs are our assets. We haven't got on here any of the equipment generators and we haven't got any of the bollards and fencing stuff, and stuff for doing events on here, which are all assets. Whether they should all be listed differently, or whether they are not repeated on the asset list because their value has been now considered neutral. But I think we should list for information the signs on here because we actually own those. Remember, we had to get one back, it was took by the developer. So we should have them on here because councillors who come on the council won't know what they own.
Okay, Paul, do you want to take that point?
Yeah, we did take the decision only to include things valued under £500, over £500 on here or, or collections of things valued over £500. So some items won't be here for that reason.
Well, the signs are worth about two and a half thousand pounds each, so. So I think they, they actually come into it and they, as I was involved in getting them with Terry, they, they, they got in there. So if you were to replace each one of those signs and the licensing and stuff to do, then that's a valuable asset. All the barriers, the collective value of the barriers comes to several thousand pounds. And the cones and stuff we've got for events probably comes to more than £500. So if we don't register those things as things that we own, well, we can deter, we can diminish their value if you want to write them off as valuable. But they're not in here. And the signs that we've got for the fair, we've still got one set of signs missing after the development on the Tindrit Road for the fair, which hasn't been replaced. And we own signs outside Buckingham's Curtish. We had to pay a licence fee for those signs for the actual fair to go up. So we really do need to have those on here. People won't know we own them. And if they go missing, they won't know that they're ours.
Okay, thanks. I think we take the point there. That's not a problem to do, is it, Paul?
No, they're very happy to do that. So you'll see that the Grenville garage, all the items in there are listed because we did the stocktake there. But obviously the stocktake didn't take account of things that which are actually up around the town or outside the town or actually around the back of Morton Road toilets looking at it. So we'll include those.
Okay. I note councillor Mahi has joined us now. Welcome, Andy. And Martin?
Yes, Paul, I think you'll find, Hudson, I think you'll find that there are other listings for the barriers are in there and the yellow, and the Grenville garage, the yellow road sign and traffic diverted signs, traffic cones 130. They are in there. Oh, that's all disappeared now. And some of the equipment is in there, but under another heading for Hillcrest. So I think maybe just a little bit more tidying up and you'll find them all in there, items above 500. But there are at the bottom of page two, three and into four for the, for the traffic cones. So I think just another look at maybe re-categorise because they've been maybe put under a slightly different name. You know, 127 Hillcrest rather than just Hillcrest. And the, and the machine has thrown it out in a different area.
Okay, we'll have a go into it and make sure it's definitely correct by the time we give it to full council in May.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that?
Paul Huron's.
Sorry, Paul. You're muted. You're still muted. You're muted.
One of the chapels in the cemetery has still got all the kit in it, you know, all the benches and that stuff. And, you know, that would cost quite a lot of money to replace if someone nicked it and burnt it or something. And it's not valued here at all, I don't think. Unless it's, because I think that's what I call the West Chapel, I think, but I could be wrong.
So the chapel itself is there with the value on it.
But it's the equipment in it, the, the pews and there's a reason it remained in it, you know, for holding a service.
That's true. Like I say, we'll definitely go through it. Robin, the signs are there. I just found them.
Where have you found them then?
I've lost them again now. Oh, metal barriers times 28 in Norton, Morton Road are there.
I think as somebody remarked earlier, the problem is they're not where you expect to find them.
No.
I expect to see sort of road closure stuff and then a whole list of it and then cemetery and something else.
If you mix it all up, Paul, with the respect, it's not easy to see. You want to see it linear. There's some other things that I could add to it, but I don't think, I'll probably drop you an email about that. I don't think we need to go into it tonight.
That'd be helpful if you did.
Yeah, that would be helpful, Robin. Yeah, town entrance signs are halfway up page one. And location, the bypass.
So it seems that 99.9% of the stuff is on the list, but not where you'd expect to find it.
Yeah. So as I say, we've now automated it to a much more efficient system, which stores it in a better fashion, but obviously the report, the report coming out of it isn't as helpful as it could be. So we'll have a look at that for you.
We've all got the chip in place, Paul, we'll be fine.
Should we move on then? The review of council.
Martin still had a hand.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Mark, I didn't.
Sorry, just one more. Yes, you are going to review it, but on.
Oh, you're muted.
You've gone quiet. You're muted, Martin. You're still muted. Open your window and shout.
I was trying to push the spacebar and look at the document and it was rolling all over the place and I'm muting me at the same time. On page four, I think it was, there's just a spelling mistake, council is spelt incorrectly. So. But you're going to review the whole lot, but just give it a once over as well. Thanks.
Okay, we'll be ready to move on then to the council and staff subscriptions for other bodies.
Yeah.
I think that's just presented for receiving it, isn't it?
Yeah, to note the information.
Yeah, okay. So do we note that?
Yep.
Okay, financial risk assessment. Another 20 odd pages. Do you want me to whizz through them a page at a time? I think it might be as well, actually. I'll, I'll do that and then I'll come to you, Robin. So page one. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. It would help if the page is numbered, wouldn't it? Seven. Eight. Nine. 10. 11. 12. 13. 14. 15. 16. 17. 18, which is just a little bit. Then appendix one, which is page 19. Appendix two, page 20. Everybody reasonably happy then? I know Robin needs to say something, but otherwise, okay, Robin?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. It's just the wording on five. I don't know what page it is because as you said, it hasn't got a number on it. But it's on cemeteries. It says new land under risks and it says new land identified current negotiations with landowner and planning underway. Well, I believe it should say planning for the cemetery underway because it took us five years to get the planning and anyone read this and think we were still struggling with the five years for the planning. So I think it just needs a word put in there. I think that's what he meant to say, but it isn't clear because it just says planning underway. So if we can insert that word in there, that, 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 that'll be sensible, I think.
Is that okay, Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Martin? Here we go again.
On the Boston box, I don't know what else you call it, but on the coloured box, you have a rating of five as green and also as amber. So I think that needs some ending.
Uh, hang on, just let me go to the box.
In fact, six is also.
Yeah, you've got a six in there as well.
A green and amber as well.
That is intentional.
Surely not. A five's a five, isn't it? A risk of five is a five. It should be a particular colour. You can't have different fives with different colours.
You've got top left and bottom right with the colours.
Yeah, I can see that. Okay, we'll change that. I, I will double check and take advice as well because I've got a feeling there was a reason for it. But now you've said it, I can't think of a common sense reason to give you. So if you'll allow me, I'll double check and let you know.
Of course, no problem.
I think it'll be a good idea if maybe at your next meeting, you spend a bit of time looking at the, the red ones to see whether any of those high risks could be mitigated in some way as well. Robin again?
It's not, I don't think in this, Chairman, I didn't know it's any actually in the red, but the one which I was concerned about was long term sickness and employment, which is on one of the numbers of pages. It's now got to 15. When it gets to 16, it moves into the red. I think the incoming chairman, when present chairman and the town clerk should discuss that. Because it's now, it's got to a 15, 16, it'd go into the, the high risk red. So I think an explanation to the chairman, incoming chairman, to know whether it needs to be discussed at committee or go to somewhere else, because it does seem to be getting rather high. And, and I don't think we should discuss what the issues are in the meeting. So I think the new chairman and that should do, because it could be easily explained and I don't want to go into any detail.
Thank you for that, Robin. That's probably a good point. Anything else on?
Can I just, sorry, check, I just follow up on that point actually. Robin has raised a good point and actually I recently spent a day of my life on being trained in our pension system. And one of the, a couple of take, one of the takeaways I came away with was that we don't have any insurance if somebody were to take. If we had a kind of 25-year-old employee who became sick due to work, actually the impact on our pension strain could be quite significant, given the low number of employees we have. So I do think we need to investigate whether there's additional insurance we should have in terms of long-term sickness of employees. Because managing that within the overall staffing budget is quite risky for an organisation our size, I think.
Are you through the chairman happy that that would get brought back via the chairman with a full explanation? Because I don't think you bring that stuff to committee without the new chairman being fully informed about it. And maybe just for my own comfort, discuss it with the present chairman before we lift so that if there is an issue, he can leave a note on, on the pad.
You're just trying to keep me lashed down to this for a bit longer, aren't you, Robin?
No, I'm just making.
If I mention that Paul and I have a sort of a Zoom pre-meeting before all of these meetings to run through various things and catch up on odds and ends and all the rest of it. So there is good contact and I see no reason why my successor shouldn't continue that anyway. But that's after the incoming incumbent, as it were. All right, we'll be ready to move on then.
Yep.
Yes, appendix S.
So if I can just explain, Chair, this is, I think it's a report you haven't seen before that we're required to show you once a year. And what it reflects is money moving between the councils' three bank accounts. And this is probably the first year in my time where we've moved much money between the bank accounts. So two things to note on that. One is the only account which any of us can actually take any money out of is the current account. So that's the account where we make all the payments from, when you get all the paperwork about. The fixed term deposit account with Lloyds and the CCRA public sector account are both set up. So all we can do is move money into that account from our current account and take money out of that account back into the current account. So from a security point of view, the only account you need to be worried about is what's going on with the current account. And that's what we normally talk about. So this is just to note how the money's being managed. We used to have the fixed term deposit. So this is just to note how the money's being managed. Um, we used to have the fixed term deposit account and then we started to use the CCLA account instead and we went through that big discussion. I've left the minimum, which is ten thousand pounds, in the fixed term deposit with Lloyds, just because that leaves us an account there if we ever need it for anything. Um, and CCLA, you'll see that we moved the money into in a hundred thousand pound chunks, because that's the most Lloyds would let us move in one go. And we've put as much in there as reasonable to keep cash flow. Obviously, the downside is we've made almost nothing from that account this year because of the financial situation, but nonetheless, we're doing what we said we would do.
Everybody happy with that then?
Yep.
Good.
Martin and I have both got hands.
Oh, Martin.
Yes, for those people that are streaming and listening to this, could you um give us an explanation of what CCLA is, because it comes up in the next agenda or the next appendix and the one after, please?
Yes, so CCLA are the organisation we deposit a good deal of our funds with, and I've forgotten what it stands for. And it's not on the following report. Um, so the CCLA was set up following the two thousand and eight crash, where lots of councils lost money or certainly for time lost money uh to Iceland and other places. Um, CCLA was set up with the support of the LGA as a way of helping local authorities invest money more safely. Uh, so they run about twenty, they deposit money with about twenty different banks, some UK based, some international on very low risk levels. So that means we've got our money with spread across twenty banks. So if one of our banks goes down, we don't lose all the money, we just lose one twenty off the offer in very, very vague terms. It was also a positive place in terms of interest, but that's not as positive now, but nowhere is, as we'll come on to the next agenda items. Um, and also because it's their public sets deposit account, we've got twenty four hour access to the funds. So I just send an email link, the money comes in our account within twenty four hours, whereas most other deposits for that kind of amount will obviously be much longer. Um, the Lloyds account takes up to thirty one days to give us our money back. So if anything horrible goes on on with the economy, at least we can get our money very quickly.
Thanks very much. Two things um there. CCLA stands for churches, charities and local authorities. Thanks to Google. And Martin raised a quite an interesting point in asking that question about how some of this nomenclature just passes over the head of anybody happening to 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 look in. So I wonder if, you know, if we could perhaps move towards saying what it is in full at the first time it's quoted and then go down to the um to the acronyms. Right, anything else on that? Sorry, Robin, didn't see your hand, but I did though.
Thank you, Chairman. Just at some point, you'll, can we show a few things, because we're going to be purchasing a cemetery and at some point soon we will be signing the deeds. Um, we um, we agreed to purchase it and put the money, but we need to at some point express which actual pot we were taking out out of, because although we agreed to purchase it, we didn't say where we were taking money, that could be something which can be a note to us. And the other thing is can I seek assurance that the money from Buckinghamshire Council is coming in in the way we historically expected it to uh from the precept? Because of course, um are they paying it as in thirds, paying it as it all at once, or are they hanging on to it? Although they're not getting much interest on the money, it is our council tax and they shouldn't be hanging on to it um for an extreme amount of money because it stays in their account, not ours. Little, little explanation on what the new purpose of that money will be or use of it.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so the money from Buckinghamshire Council is carrying on being paid in two lots every six months, as it was previously. Um, there was a delay of about four days or something in twenty twenty for the first payment uh for everybody across the county, but that hasn't happened again. So, yes, and obviously at the moment, the the great thing is we tell them what we want at the start of the financial year and they guarantee to pay it to us and they then take the risk of if council tax goes down and their council taxpayers go down, then it's their loss, not our loss. Obviously, in a good year, that means it's their benefit, not our benefit.
Okay, happy with that, Robin?
Yeah, it was just that at some point, it might be appropriate a note to members, because we will presumably sign in an agreement at some point with um the landowners of the cemetery. And if, and I don't recall when we we agreed to pay it, but I don't recall which budget we were going to take that or of. It could be a lack of memory. I presume some of it was coming out of earmarked reserves or out of our reserves. But I think we just need a note somewhere um to say where it's coming out of for the public record.
So the agreement was to take it out of the general reserve, so that's what the minute of that meeting says. So there's not an earmarked reserve at the moment that says that, because the agreement was to take it straight out of the general reserve.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, ready to move on then to CCLA investments? Remind you, it's churches, charities and local authorities investments. Paul, what's this about appendix J?
So there are two appendices. The first one is we've had a number of queries as we've been talking about our climate emergency plan. Um, about, well, what are we doing with our investments to make them ethical? So this is the response from CCLA about their efforts to ensure that our money invested with them is invested ethically. I mean, at the moment, I I haven't got any other suggestions to give members about more ethical investments, to be frank. Um, if that was something members wanted to investigate, I can ask around, but at the moment, finding anywhere else to put money is a might not be the wisest thing anyway.
Okay, um. Anybody got anything to raise on that, Robin?
Interesting question. Was asked at audit on Buckinghamshire Council about ethical investments. Um, so money we we put, it 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 breaks down into money which you need to get hold of and money which you put into long term deposits. I think we need to treat the two things separately. Um, Paul, maybe go and look at what's what you would do with long term money, because if you're placing it with someone it's usually petrochemicals and type of things that tobacco industries and stuff that 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 people, those type of things. Whether we'd be wanting to be in those, but I think that if we're going to have a policy on that, I think it's not something you make on the hoof. We need to bring something back about um the benefits against the risks and if the council wants to go down that way, it it has to really do it properly and look at the it it whatever. Personally, I think it's a good idea to try and not invest in um companies that aren't ethical. And of course, um, that can be unethical employment as well. So I think maybe it's something that town clerk could on this back of this, go and do a bit of work, see whether we we're happy for our long term investments to be treated in the same way as our short term access money, which is a completely different question. Money you need to get hold of. It's very difficult to find somewhere ethical to put money uh which you need to get quick access to. It might be more possible and I think it will be a growing thing that councils will have to do um to meet their um their targets that they've all set themselves, they've got to be twenty thirty, twenty fifty. Um, um, global target. So I think we need to look at it, because I think it would be a story in the future. I don't think we can make a decision tonight. I think town clerk needs to go and come back with something to a future meeting around that. And if we then make a recommendation to council, because that should be a full council decision, really, on what it does.
Okay, Robin, thanks for that. I I think it's a question of in in the main, that very often these um higher interest and longer term investments and that do spread themselves into areas which may be less ethical than others. Um, and and that's the sort of balance that we need to, that I guess that we we need to try and support, but okay, we'll see what comes out of that, or you will. Appendix H, Paul?
Yeah, so this is uh the most recent note we've received from the deposit fund, the CCLA fund um regarding what might happen if the country moved to having a negative interest rate. Um, so obviously that's not currently on the table, but the government has mentioned it might be possible at some point, or Bank of England has. To be honest, if if that did happen, I'm pretty sure that other bank accounts have the same issue anyway. So unless we took the money out of the bank and put it under a mattress or did something more creative with it. I I don't know what else I'd be able to recommend, other than just weathering the storm with CCLA. Obviously, we'd take whatever advice was coming out of NALC and the LGA at the time. We might well take advice and learning from Buckinghamshire Council, who have much better and more qualified financial people than myself. But it's it's for members to note the risk and to note that we're certainly watching all the advice that we have.
I I think we're pretty much aware of that possible risk. Right, thank you. Um. Move on to item ten. Yes, compliments and complaints. One compliment noted with delight, I think. Item eleven. Find it, appendix J, there we are. Item nineteen on here actually also um links to the agenda item twelve, doesn't it? Anybody got any comments?
Yeah.
Yes, go on then.
Yeah, the climate champions have sort of shared this between the four of us, but I've realised I'm the only climate champion on resources committee at the moment. But I am pleased to see on page five, item twenty one, um, the resources item to do with grants. That it does say that members will consider the environmental impact when allocating grant funds. But in the right hand column, it says twenty one, twenty one. So I'm not sure whether that should be twenty one, twenty two. Because I know that didn't happen this year, apart from the long term ones.
Yeah.
And presumably the the grant committee is going to have to consider whether you know, some of some of the applications and that, of course, couldn't possibly meet some, meet the requirement, much as the organisation might like it to. Um, but that that's something for the future. Okay, anything else on that?
No, that's it for now, thank you.
Sorry, Ruth, I didn't catch that.
No, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Right, we'll move on to item twelve on the agenda, carbon footprint audit.
Good idea.
Yeah, I think so as well. Well, there's a recommendation there, isn't there?
Yeah.
Do we accept the recommendation or do we want to talk about it?
Happy to agree.
Yes, please.
Robin wants to talk about it.
No, I'm just not interrupting, Chairman. I was putting my hand up before I spoke. I thought that would be the best way. I was going to say, I'm zooming through you, Chairman, this is going to be a recommendation to council, so members will get this um anyway, or are we under terms of reference, able to agree this? Um, in which case it becomes um agreed. I think that's important, we know that, so that um if it's going to go today, need to present, to make sure that all members in the new council are aware of it when it comes to committee.
Oh, oh, sorry, we're we're talking about an audit, basically, aren't we?
Yeah, but a recommendation.
Yeah, 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 let me finish. Um, we're we're entitled to to sort of bring forward on our, on our, off our own backs. But I see no reason why it couldn't go to full council, just to keep them all in the picture. Uh, in any case, it will be recorded in the minutes here, so everybody will see it anyway. Yes?
I'm happy to be led by the chairman, whatever he thinks best.
Consider yourself led then. Right, um, induction plan for new members. Paul, do you want to introduce? It's pretty self explanatory, I think, isn't it? But um, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So obviously, we're working out the induction plan. We've put down there our initial plan. Um, so we have the pack. Uh, we're also looking at holding an initial session on Monday, the tenth of May, and then sessions for each of the committees. Um, I'm offering one to ones myself for the new members to start with. And obviously, there'll be other support available through BAOK in terms of training. But grateful for anything we might be missing.
Okay, thank you. Um, Robin first and Martin?
In the public session, we had um a legal statement round the Equalities Act and our duties as councillors to um act within that. And the Equalities Act is quite wide, quite brief. I think that noting the statement of the senior councillor is retiring past mayor and district councillor, I think. Could I ask that we put something along those, the legal responsibilities into the training? So that that members are informed about that. Um, now there are, there are, which isn't for this meeting, there are means through standing orders already where we can take action if the chairman is in disagreement or or wishes to, but um that's not for today, but I think we need to inform members. It's not fair for members to join a council and not understand their legal position of the council, because we signed to um to accept the Equalities Act some years ago and we, as a council, agreed that we'd work within the Equalities Act. And the Equalities Act applies to planning and it applies to any other things that we do. So I think it's important um for you, Chairman, that uh something about that is put into the training.
Yeah, Paul, do you want to comment on that? I I I believe, and it's a long time ago when I did council induction, but I I had a session with the then incumbent about the legal parameters and and so forth.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to put something on the equalities duty, um, because it's often something that's discussed and not fully understood. Uh, and possibly something about the Humans Rights Act and the and related bits of legislation. Uh, so we'll look at something in the pack in terms of appropriate links to that. Interestingly, BAOK don't offer anything on equality and diversity training, so in terms of more specific training, if that's something we needed, we'd have to do it ourselves, but that.
Is there not the 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 sort of new council, the guidance booklets? Or is not being issued now?
Well, they're all available online, yeah, so they should, they'll be linked to from the induction pack and the members will be encouraged to look at them.
Yeah, I I think I think it's covered in 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 there. Yes, Robin?
I wasn't trying to write and choose what what members went on. I'm just saying that we, as a council, voted to accept the Equalities Act. Um, funny enough, it took a motion to the district council, it started to get them to accept it in planning. But um, but I do think all we need is what the Equalities Act and the areas that refer to the work that we do as a council. I don't think we need to discuss it, but I do think that it, when we're making decisions and making actions as a council, we have to be minded to that when we're speaking and doing things. I don't think it's, I don't want to have a discussion of why or what. It is, it is a legal responsibility that we've accepted, so we should have it there. Whether we go on diversity training, that's a, that's a good thing to go on. But that isn't what I'm asking. I'm asking them to be advised of their legal obligations um as members. I think that is something the RFO um um town clerk should really give them, because then we when if something happens, that gives the chairman the opportunity to say that you are aware of it, and I think that's a good thing.
Okay, I I think that point's taken. Yes, Ruth?
Um, I just wanted to check the date of the annual town meeting, because in my diary, I've got it down as the twenty sixth of May at seven PM, which is the same as the Environment Committee induction. So I just wanted to check.
Have you, you've got the dates there, Paul?
Yeah, Nina's got the answer to that.
Yes, Nina.
Ruth's absolutely right. Um, I should have got in before you, Ruth. We are going to have to move the environment induction to the second of June, which is the next week. Otherwise, yes, there would be a clash with the annual town meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, glad we sorted that out. Finally, Martin, we'll come to you.
I was waiting patiently, but there you go. Um, just a small thing, but I think quite important. Could we change the title to new and existing councillors? I know it says it in the last sentence of two point one. But I think it is important to have it in the title to show that even the existing councillors should be refreshed on any new policies, law, other items that the council and uh, you know, NALC want to bring to our attention. And this is the ideal time to do it, um, when we uh, for those that get re-elected and and for new members all at the same time, then we're all in the same uh frame of mind.
That's absolutely right, absolutely right. Yes, Robin?
Hey, just to say, our late friend, councillor Oisham.
Yeah.
Used to say the same thing about training, even though he'd been a councillor for up to years. He said, I always went to training if I could, was available, because you always learn something new. And that was one of the things Derek used to always say. And um, thank you, Martin, for taking up Derek's um position on this thing. Um, um, I will send you the braces in the post.
Okay, anything else on that induction? Okay, anything else on that induction program? No, we come down to the chair's announcements then, for, for once I've got a couple. As I mentioned at the outset, this is my last time of chairing a meeting and actually um the, the last formal meeting that I'm going to be attending. So thanks to all of you who contributed so fully to uh the work of the resources committee. Particular thanks are due to Paul, our, our town clerk, and to Jodie, the accounts officer, who seeing me, just to see, steering me through the, the complexity of local authority accounts. I, I have to say that even after fourteen years, it's still a bit of a mystery to me. And uh, finally, I, I wish you, whether, whether you're remaining on the council or, or going off to past your new, all the very best in the future. Um, so thanks again.
Can I through you, Chair, thank you for your service to the council?
Yeah, yeah.
And Chairman, and, and one of the most competent councillors we've ever had. Thank you.
Yeah, you've been fantastic, sir.
I, I, I should replay that segment uh of the YouTube thing over and over again. Thank you. Next meeting is on the fifth of July, which seems an awful long way away, but.
You'll be on holiday then, Mike.
Uh, no, well. God willing, yes, I shall.
I'll be coming with you.
That's it then, people.